I am very involved in the budget process right now. I have met with and will continue to meet this week with each department supervisor. We did take a couple budgets to community development last night, the code and the planning one, everything seems to be going smoothly. We did talk about the sidewalk program and I will probably add a line item out of the code department because that's who's processing the applications. So I'm hoping we do put something in the budget to continue that program because it is huge. It's very successful. Actually, I was working out this morning and ladies like there are so many good sidewalks going on in town here. And so.
Many, like, do we know how many applied through our program?
Yes, I get you all that. Yeah, we get a report.
Or a dollar amount. I think there was thirty seven thousand of a hundred and fifty thousand left.
A list of every single, everyone that applied for the permit and is, you know.
Like a big success. I we've talked about it's a big success thing that we should re tootin a little bit. Here's a little bit, you know, he was a successful government president.
I'm trying to hear that.
Successful government program. It's it'd be interesting to find out, you know, how many sidewalks, you know, of those active transportation spots that we never thought we'd be able to do. Right? How many of those got got filled? And you know, what is that full dollar amount that, you know, essentially just got injected into the economy over like including everybody's project, right? It's hundred and fifty plus whatever. Yeah, yeah. So we should be able to find some kind of number there.
Bowl, right? Because your best reimbursement is fifty percent.
Beyond. So they figured, you know, even some sidewalk pads that didn't need repair, that was just maybe. That still could have passed inspection. They just replaced the whole thing. So it all looks really good. Um, so that's a good thing, but the budget is in process. I think we're going to be talking about the police budget on Thursday. So which is a good thing. Um, so far, everything's going smoothly with it and we'll have October's. Um, work session will be be able to submit the whole thing and hopefully we'll keep on track for to advertise it in November and pass it in that first week in December. So that's the guideline for there. Um, I just got information from our public works department that. Our supervisor that Church Street will be closed to the to between sixth and seventh Wednesday and Thursday. From five AM to five PM. So they're replacing the ADA sidewalk. Um, so that street will be closed from six to seven.
They also announced that. Action of Fourth Street and Indian Springs Road. Which intersect, so.
Who made that announcement?
On Facebook, it was in, it was in the report, it was in the statement issued by. Uh, Penda, that was. Uploaded by by WCCS.
Um, maybe they meant two different, the two different streets. I don't know. We'll get.
Was it the picture of the bridges? Was that the the one you're talking about? Because they mentioned something about uh, the cones and stuff leaving over by Walmart. I don't know if maybe that's anyway.
Destruction and everybody's, um. You know, again, we everybody just has to be patient. I know there's some night paving going on on South Seventh Street. Um, we are fielding calls on that, but hopefully, again, it's all temporary. We're going to get so many roads done. Um, everything will look great in the next month or two. Um. I can go over right now. I was gonna have it kind of part of my report, but it's on here, the Borough Hall renovation. Um, I just want to update on everybody. It's been a year in the progress and we are almost ready to put it out for bid. I don't know what's scarier here. So, um. The way the timeline for now is going to be, um. We're, we're going to look at the next Public Works meeting on the twenty fifth. Todd will probably discuss at the meeting, releasing the bid. Okay, so the bid's probably going to go out. Um, sometime first week in October, um, or actually October eighteenth, we're hoping to put the bids out. Um, no, November, we're going to have the bid opening. And then, once the bid opening, there's a process with the engineers to look at the bids and do a recommendation. And then looking at the end of November to do a notice of award to the bidder. And then we're going to prepare the contracts and then.
Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving is prepare the contracts. And then, um, we're going to get some bring in some storage units in December to get things loaded up into the storage unit. I know. Wow, this is what, yeah. Um, and then we'll have at the end of December, a pre-construction meeting, then. Early January, middle of January, we'll start phase one of relocating. The police will move down here. We'll move over across the hall, across the street and we'll start the phases of construction. And which should last up to no more than hopefully a year.
When do the bids go out or when would they start being accepted, whoever the terminology is? When would the bid process begin?
The October, yes. So, and we'll advertise that, put it in multiple, like, made, like, well, the engineers will distribute it to contractors. And, um, we'll have, um, we'll probably do a bid opening. It looks like November sixteenth. So.
For sixteen?
Opening. This. Where we're probably at right now.
That's all Monday's public meeting.
Well, that bid opening actually is going to be a separate meeting where because we couldn't get it to match up with a public works meeting or a council meeting. So it's probably just going to be, um, just the bid opening during the day at like one o'clock, but that. That will be defined later. Once we get the bids, the bids out.
All be discussed on Monday's meeting, correct?
Yeah, okay, yeah. It's part of the engineer's report too, so.
Just help me because in admin and community development, we don't open a lot of bids, right? Those are the two committees I've been on. So the bid opening, then that allows you to see them to blind bids. Is that the case? Correct? That allows you to then look at them, see the numbers, obviously the easy thing, and then the engineer would review them. Is that right? That's the normal process. And basically, if ones have to praise the other, he's going to look at it and make sure. Right, right. He'll, okay, or she, I guess, whoever, the engineer.
We reject all bids and have to put it out, forget, like, so that not happens. Yeah, I know. So, yeah, um. But it's, it's, it's moving along, so.
Public knowledge.
Is the, I'm sorry, is the.
Make up a number. Let's say, let's say we're willing to accept up to two million dollars, whatever, make up a number, right? Is that public? Like, the people writing their bids, do they know that?
I'm not, not everything is, um, no, but the specs in the bid are like very detailed. So, but not, no, our budget is not, no.
Spread the word, there's two million dollars, lowest bidder wins. Okay, just making sure.
So, um, that's, that's all I have to report, so.
Are there questions for Nicole?
Just to. Manager Seepa shared, we are participating in the budget project and construction is everywhere in town, so we just ask our community to continue being patient. You know, traffic can be a good thing because it indicates that people want to be in our community, but traffic can be a negative thing because when we don't want it, it's extremely frustrating. So I just ask our community to continue to be patient through the nice weather and the construction projects, even sidewalk construction causes some minor inconvenience to travel with large pieces of equipment being parked in their own specific dangers. But certainly all positive. And the council packet tonight, I have a calls for service. Uh, this was not included in August's first meeting because of the time, uh, the holiday that that it fell on. So, uh, calls for service continue to be trending in an upward direction. Again, again, that's not necessarily negative. It's just indicates increased activity. We are busier at night than we have been now that.
The numbers from twenty nineteen to.
This particular thing. Twenty nineteen because the calls in twenty twenty-two were back to pre-COVID numbers. So I think that it's a, it's a fair assessment. This, it's a fair comment.
Two is a good.
Yeah, so, uh, during the, it says year to date twenty twenty-two is a comparison to where we are in twenty twenty-three. So, uh, also, we're preparing for homecoming. That's really the largest special event that we're planning, although there is an event this weekend, I believe, with Static, uh, as on IUP. It's an IUP event. I think it's on Saturday in IRMC Park. Sir, that's my, that's my report today. Okay.
Earlier, and it's just remarkably consistent, right? Most of these are within just a few numbers of each other. The one that did stand out that I wanted to ask was the traffic enforcement effort. Just want to make sure I understand what I'm reading. You have one thirty-eight for this, for last month, excuse me. And then below that was citations. So what is? The citation when it was in respect to a traffic, that's the ticket given. Is that what that is?
So the first line, there's traffic enforcement efforts, that's, that's warnings plus citations. So that one hundred and thirty-eight number encompasses both traffic stops that result in either a verbal warning or a written warning and and traffic stops that result in citation. Where the the line underneath that says summary citations, that's non-traffic. So that would be disorderly conduct, public drunkenness, harassment, the summary level criminal offense. Nothing to do specifically with the traffic enforcement effort. So that number is our criminal investigation.
Then I see the non, yeah, yeah, that makes sense though. Okay.
Higher level criminal charges, the more serious charges, misdemeanors and felonies. So try to break it down three ways. And the reason that traffic enforcement is connected is just because we consider enforcement both a warning and citation because if we change the behavior of the driver, there's traffic safety, then we've done a positive job without a punitive result, so.
A major difference compared to last year, other than the school one, and that one has an obvious, obvious reason, right? So that's why I wanted to figure out, ask about it, make sure I understood what it meant.
Any other questions for the chief?
Uh, manager Seepus, um, on various issues, um. Nothing really more to report at this time. I mean, things are status quo. We're trying to work through the contract issue with the police and. Um, we've been working on some of these property things and. The sheriff's department informed me today that to do the rid of it yesterday, to do the rid of executions on the Bell properties. They're requiring a twenty-five hundred dollar per property, um, advance.
Why Pat? The writ of execution for the properties.
So like, yes.
Charging us?
Yes.
The properties are there?
Now, we could get it back if we don't, if it doesn't, if it's not spent, but that's their initial deposit and that's across the board for everyone. They've jacked it up significantly over the last few years. It used to be like five hundred bucks. Twenty-five hundred dollars for property, two thousand, two thousand five hundred dollars per property for them to serve the writ of execution. Yes. That's correct.
And we may or may not get the money back.
Right. I mean, you know, if a third party buys it. Then you will get your cost back. If you end up buying it and then destroying it, or not destroying, demolishing, then you're not going to get your money back because you're the ones buying the property.
But I mean, it's in, there's a budget from the, for these divided properties. So it's not, I mean, this is.
Budgeted to do it, but I just wanted you to know that, you know, because normally, like, look, if it's, if it's, you know. Twenty-five bucks, two hundred bucks, I front that money and then I include it in my bill in a call. I'm not going to front you ten grand. Sorry, guys. Uh, yeah, I have no doubt about it. But. Yeah, that's what it is. I'm just letting you know for transparency purposes. I mean, we've come this far, as far as we've ever gotten on these, we're not going to stop now. But I wanted you to know that that was my conversation with the sheriff's office yesterday. And if it became an issue, then maybe we pick and choose instead of going after all four, but why would we do that? That would be. Yeah, just, I mean, my, my two. Nation is that we, uh. Four properties. In.
Sheriff's offices do.
Yes. It's a big price tag. I would probably want a motion, but can we vote tonight? Yeah, we can vote.
We can vote tonight.
For the ten thousand, for the bright lighted properties.
For the record, what I'm asking for is, uh, a motion to pay the sheriff's writ of execution fee. For the Bell property, all four Bell properties at twenty-five hundred dollars per property.
Your spending money. Call because we're spending money.
If we, if we think about how much this costs down the line, this is an important number to have, right? Because we've sort of been ballparking, it's about fifteen grand to tear building down.
Alago. Yes. Four.
Yes.
Herring, Pratsa, Lancaster.
Yeah.
Noel, Smith, Steelman.
Yes.
Taylor. Eight, yes.
Bills ever pay any of that back or no?
I don't think so.
Who, who? Bell paying back?
Isn't it a Bell property?
These are right. Right now, just so you understand, Bell owes the borough, uh. Five hundred and some thousand dollars. So we're taking the properties, the sheriff will set up a sheriff sale. If somebody buy, a third party comes in and buys them, then we get money and the nice thing is, hopefully, somebody's not going to buy the property and not fix it. But if they don't fix it and nobody buys it, then the borough would buy it for our costs, what we have in it.
And then we're out the thousand because we don't pay ourselves back.
Yeah, right.
Well. We're up to ten thousand if it's all four.
Yes, right, exactly.
Actually, it'll sell because, you know.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. Well, and again, look, we can go in and demolish the property if the house is dilapidated to the point where we need to. Clear the land and sell the lot. So you may get that back. But they're not, they're not building any more lots in the borough, so.
They could make it a parking lot, gee.
No.
I'm sorry, I have nothing else. Thank you. First, no, thank you.
Are there any questions for the solicitor?
I, and I asked you, I think I'd ask you this question, but when I was speaking to Ben last night, he thought there might be a different answer. Is there an active attendance policy? It's, I, it's, I promise you, the fact that there's not a lot of people here was complete coincidence. I just, is there an attendance policy for council?
We don't have one right now.
Edit told me there wasn't. I was just seeking clarity.
Never seen it.
Right. But maybe we talked about, we should have one opposed to.
Should have one, but you don't have one. Okay. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know. I, yeah, we should have one. Well, I was, I would.
New council, there's new council coming in.
Admin?
I would think admin.
Admin. No. But the code of conduct, Nicole, has no punishment. There's no teeth. Vicious ones like fangs. I'm out for blood.
That's why there's none there.
Thank you, Ben.
And my previous, um. Additions to the agenda, I think.
Got, uh, Mr. President.
My report, which is next on the agenda. Not that it's all that important, but. Since our last meeting, I've attended. Four meetings that are relevant to the council, along with discussing items that come before council on a regular basis with Nicole. First was the monthly stormwater meeting, nothing new. It continued to raffle up rain barrels while sharing information with. About everybody who's involved's activities. And Kyle does a great job of sharing that. I also attended another Indiana County Sustainable Economic Development Task Force meeting, planning for the annual summit. Which will take place at the KCAC on Friday, October thirteenth, from nine to three. You can check the website for details about workshops and speakers and so forth. His homecoming. All the usual preparations are in place. Chief talked about this, there's nothing new. There's not going to be a concert this year as part of it, although I'm not sure what effect that'll have on events, but. And finally, and this is dear to me, and it's since related to downtown Indiana, and I was there. Oktoberfest committee meeting I went to. September thirtieth, starting at two for VIPs and three for the general public. There are nineteen brewers. Committed so far. It's sixty-five for the VIPs and thirty-something for regular. Admittance. It's going to be across the street here. But we won't be using the borough's chairs this year.
Mister Mayor is not here. Uh, travels and meetings, either this month or in previous months, in particular, I guess, I'm thinking about the I Act and Sustainable Economy Task Force. Is there much conversation, sort of regionally, about, um, sort of our struggling economy or the closure of the, the power plant and? The imminent closure of the other plants? Is there a, is it, do you get, do you get the hint that there's that?
I get that, that that's alluded to because it comes up at county meetings.
Yeah.
But it hasn't really been part of any of the meetings I've been in.
On another note, Ben.
Yes.
Is it IUP enrollment up by six hundred?
Over a million dollars.
So that's really good news. We are at nine thousand two hundred, Ben?
I don't know the specifics.
Mayor's report, mayor's not here, so now our main business for the evening, the old business. The twenty twenty-four meetings, committees, structure and Borough Hall renovation. We have the proposal for a meeting structure as part of the packet.
Some thoughts on that, uh, sort of figuring out how to move forward. Um, and I think, uh, so there's been a little bit of discussion about it, a couple of us talking about it, sort of a little general dissatisfaction with a few things. Um, uh, but it's, but it hasn't really changed so much. Um, I, I feel like we sort of, or they're, I don't, uh. We need to make a decision. And so if, though, if there are folks who have a different idea, we should probably come up with another suggestion. You know, by next meeting, if, if, or, or, or we're just sort of fiddle this one.
Things were kind of weird.
Yeah, I just think we shouldn't, if we have an, if you have an idea for a different setup, and I think there were some good ideas spoken about, I think it's probably worthwhile to get them on paper so we can look at them.
And divide it into like four instead of five and put shade tree with public works.
That's a commission.
Increase the separate commission.
And, and I'm not necessarily agreeing or disagreeing with this, but there's two things I think that need to be brought up. If committees are going to be members of two, yes. When it won't, it shouldn't be. My, my question is, how would you break a tie during a vote and how would you? Yeah, there, there's different things that have been kicked around. I don't, doesn't necessarily matter who it is. Some people have stated perhaps the president, hey, can I, can I finish?
And you talk really loudly. Okay, you know what? You know what, Tammy? What do you mean by that? There it goes, what? Obviously, did you not hear me? I don't care. Of which there's no teeth to this code of conduct. Do you have a talking sick?
Can we come back? I think look, I was making, uh, I'm making a point, I have to get important.
Only one person is missing now the committee cannot take place. And so would there be an acceptable built-in individual that could be a stand-in in that moment? For example, for example, Peter, you tend to go to every single meeting. Right, but when it did come up, when it was only you and I at community development, that we didn't have an official meeting. Which is why we couldn't have, yes, but there, Ben was there.
Because you don't have, I mean, it was only you and one member.
Yeah, it's you.
It's not quorum.
It was two or three months ago, if you recall, it was, it was just you and I. Okay.
There's two council committee members and the third committee is the president, then one counselor and the president would make a quorum.
The one council member and president could only be fifty percent.
Pretty, if you are not there, do we constitute a quorum? You follow my logic here?
You get two members, but no president. Present.
Two members?
It had been talked about. I didn't. None of them at the moment, but there's only going to be eight council members.
I feel like it's difficult to talk about because we don't have something in paper in front of us, which is.
The point is, a mechanism of in that, and you know, in that moment should be in place. If, if, if there's smaller council meetings, or excuse me, smaller committee meetings.
Does this make sense? The three on each committee, two being council members and the third being the president.
Comes up.
Sure.
Yeah, it needs to be in there somehow. It's all really silly. I would agree with that as a general rule.
We're tearing rapidly here. Two out of three and there's, there'll be a quorum.
Hypothetical situation that would be solved.
I want to wait a second. There's a lot going on right now.
I think that's fine. I just think it needs to be in there. That's all.
In which we should make it clear.
You guys have committee meetings all the time and not necessarily you have to pass the vote. You can recommend it and then it goes to full council and then it can be voted on at full council.
Place officially, where if, if there was a two-person, but if somebody wasn't there, if there was a, if it was a two-person committee and one person is absent. Now the staff is here for no reason. Now the meeting can't necessarily take place. Now, that's what I'm saying. So if, if.
What do you propose, the two-person committee?
At committees, we, we make it.
And so it, again, the point, the point is, it just, I think in whatever plan that comes up with. Those with a smaller council, there will in theory be less people on various committees. those with a smaller council, there will in theory be less people on various committees. At least potentially, so that we should need to make sure to build.
It happened, what happened in planning?
Quorum.
It happens, it happens with unfortunate regularity that irresponsible council members don't show up at their meetings, but.
We last time also talked about how right now in the proposal, there's two standing meetings and then a third meeting a month that's as needed.
Yes.
Which would require a lot of, I think, pre-planning, um, to get it on the, things on the schedule. Um, and we have this, this, um, communications, which is for special public stuff. So what I, what I might suggest is if you had that as a standing meeting, which is your committee meeting, then the majority of the council would be there anyways. You wouldn't have, you wouldn't run into quorum issues. And then the committees, part of what their task is, is actually outside of the meeting. But it's all the things that council members on committees do in terms of reviewing things to bring to the meeting. So whether, so it, it solves your quorum issue, it solves your advertising issue, it solves your timeliness issue, I think. Um, by just having three meetings scheduled. If you're middle of the summer, you want to cancel them, that'd be awesome.
Okay, so I think, yes, there, there was a, a point to, to, another, a separate point related though, is if it was a full-on meeting, there would be a, some extra staff presence that they wouldn't have to do now. So there would, we would be asking more of staff. And a lot of things are geared towards trying to lessen the burden on them. Right? And so I think it's a thing that at least needs to be communicated about, that if it is a full, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. But, and I do recall Nicole had mentioned possibly having that particular meeting, possibly a different time, maybe not. It all depends on the final format of this, but.
Is included in the number of committees.
Oh, just I missed that part of it. Okay, then alleviates the first problem, but doesn't answer the next part, potential problem.
Could be quite a serve on two of the four committees.
The table on the bottom?
The, 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 the special, the special committees.
This may be a question just for input from staff. I mean, it's just the life I live, but like, if I know that a meeting is, that there's three meetings, I can schedule around them. If a meeting is a, is a stochastic event, then I'm more inclined, more likely to miss it, right? So for us, for, for staff in terms of scheduling, you might be trying to plan your life out with everything. And then all of a sudden, there's a meeting that's scheduled on top of your life that you're supposed to be at because this involves a committee that you serve. Does that, I mean, I'm not sure if that, that might just be like my type A personality.
A mistake, making a mistake. You're not supposed to have a life.
Ad hoc me- meetings is what are you referring to? Right? Yeah. I mean, yes, there's going to be times where I think, according to this document, we would have to do some ad hoc, but I think we could schedule that out ahead of time.
Or did you mean the second of the three meetings?
Month as needed.
Fourth meeting during the month during, in this proposal, it seems like there's a possible fourth or no?
There, there's this, so it's a little bit, there's a little bit of, I think, editing that has to happen with this, no matter what, because it talks about four, but then there's actually, there's actually five. At one point under the personnel, it talks about two standing committees, but by my count, there are three other standing committees. So there's some things, I mean, there's just little, little stuff, um, but.
Other committee to look over this again.
No, personnel, it's just two standing committees. I don't know which of the finance ordinance or communication would be the.
This here either, I, I, I want to re, um, echo, I think, Ben's suggestion of having three standing meetings, although for maybe a little bit of a different reason, possibly because of scheduling. One of my concerns is with this particular setup is that it limits the number of times a public has to interact with us. Um, and I value those opportunities and I think they are as uncomfortable as they can be. They are what we should be looking for. So I would be totally in favor of this. We were going to go with some kind of a scenario like this where we have just these three meetings and we're all, we, we have them scheduled. So the public also knows here are times when you can come.
First Tuesday, second Tuesday and third Tuesday?
Says as needed next, maybe, yeah.
Is that are as, as needed, right?
And actually I would agree with this. Leave it standing, cancel it if you got nothing to do, rather than the other way around.
I think there's going to be stuff to do.
Nothing going on, then you cancel it. For example, a lot of the, the committee's meetings are canceled.
Goes to parties.
So some commissions cancel.
Does, what does Shade Tree do?
They cancel usually. Yeah, I don't. Because normally theirs would be the same day as Public Works and that would usually fall between Christmas and New Year.
Yeah, it's usually.
We want to make sure we are adding the burden to staff staying later on the scales, right? I think it needs to be a thing that's at least factored into whatever the final decision is, because it is going to be extra for at least some staff members. Not for Kyle.
Well, yeah, if we go, if we.
Lori, get to vote for tonight.
My only concern is, you know, at that second meeting, getting in all the information. Obviously, we've all been to committee meetings and even we had a good one last night and it still was like an hour and a half. I don't know, I maybe we just move forward with the committee meetings. I like the idea of the commission meetings. The problem is the commissions get a lot of no-shows. So maybe we reduce their meetings to maybe only five or six a year. The, um, Planning Commission and Shade Tree Commission reduce their meetings.
Ramp up stuff for Planning Commission?
I mean, more, if it's more of an information, I mean, it's run through, uh, community development and then the same stuff's run through Planning Commission, so.
Yes, by telling us about the RFPs?
Well, no, I mean, that's for your information, but the same information was addressed at the.
If, for example, planning wasn't in the middle of something, they could choose yesterday to cancel next month, right? Posted, is it not?
To cancel, you just have to post, you don't have to. If you add a meeting, you have to.
Leave it on, and then if you know there's nothing, if it's not a busy season, you can cancel it. Like the month in advance. That way Kyle and, and, and Lori aren't showing up and then they're, there's no anything. Well, or Brenda being here for planning and then there's no planning, for example.
Come to commission meetings.
But we're going to change the format. So a lot of these things may end up overlapping where they don't currently. I don't know that for a fact, but they might.
To, just like, again, sort of a staff, because you guys are here and so I have an opportunity to ask a question. Being, the argument has been having less council members means less crazy in your lap. Um, I mean, I don't know what that's worth in terms of your time overall, but then, but I think more probably more useful. Um, yeah, if you're being required to be at an extra three hours of meetings a month or whatever that comes out to be, like if that's given back to you as like you get to leave at noon on a, one Friday a month, is that, I mean, is that a reasonable quid pro quo for that? Or is that, I mean, or I mean, I'm just trying to, trying to think about like not creating, making things worse in this whole process.
I have wrote, I brought a memo to manager CPOs back in February because I took issue with the communication part, obviously. And, uh, my, my, my main tenet of my memo was, hey, uh, uh, this whole thing was, you know, geared as a, let's make staff life easier. And then it was like, hey, you know, budgets, that's sporadic, you know, personnel issues, that happens very rarely. Um, communication.
Twenty-four seven.
Okay, let's make that a committee. So like, great. Well, now I'm dealing with council input on top of my manager and my staff input versus what I went to school, what I'm doing. And I've, I've had, I've had these issues since I started in twenty eighteen, but you know, there was a firewall and that firewall will be breached if there is now a full-time, you know, designated committee that has four council members serving on it that say that they're going to meet as needed. But again, communication is not something that is it's not like, oh, hey, actually we should communicate that. No, it is constantly top of mind twenty-four seven, even if you don't make about it. So I took issue from it right from the jump, which is why I took action to try to make my case. And my solution was Axe, Axe Point C and just make them all ad hoc committees. Your budgeting, ad hoc committee, your ordinance review, ad hoc committee, personnel, ad hoc committee. Even want to make the communication. To get this far in the reapportionment process, you know, like the way I'm looking at municipal reapportionment was there, there was three different kind of tenants, there was.
It's a pointed to deal with a specific issue one time. So we wouldn't have any. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have any standing committees.
Personally, yes, that's, that's, that's my, that's the route that I, I, I formally.
Not like public, he's not saying public works, he's just saying these like the financing ordinance and personal.
Things like that.
Well, for, for this specific format, would it, would it be an option? And, and we're, we're saying that all the committees would be on Tuesday. Could some of the things of a committee happen during the work session? For example, communications for Kyle's very specific point. He's here on the work session anyway. Therefore, if he was vital to that committee meeting and it could, don't call it, I don't know, whatever, we're going to use committee meetings as we've always said, but that particular, could that portion be incorporated in the agenda of that work session? For example, and that way, instead of having a separate committee meeting, which would be a burden to Kyle compared to what his schedule is now, right? But that would help alleviate that particular pain point, would it not?
But I don't think Kyle, so the question I asked was about time, but Kyle's response is, if I'm understanding correctly, is about, um, meddlesome council.
Well, it sounded like it was two-part. It's also, he's going to be here every single second Tuesday.
It is, but it's a little bit of both.
Okay.
Like the more meddlesome you become, the more time you take.
Okay, okay, yes. Well.
Communications out here does not really lend itself to a committee. That's something that you with, with the manager's oversight.
Just a strategy. Like what, what did she mean? She wrote that particular part, right, Nicole? Like what did she, you know, she's not here to ask, but I'm curious what she specifically meant by naming it that.
Issues on, I think she's referred to projects, like maybe that could be the big project or a certain project area.
General is a thing that's been talked about, is very challenging. You can put things on Facebook, you put things online and we reach one percent of the populace, right? And it's not Kyle's fault that they're not looking for it, right? So I don't know if that's what she meant or not, but I'm trying to figure out more ways. Right. Unfortunately, she's not here to ask what she meant, but right, that naming it that particular thing.
Biddy names?
We can continue with.
Why don't we just use the old names?
I, I really do believe finance is one that we could make it like an ad hoc, because finance is really the budget and stuff like that, because we kind of review the same thing at the other committees and then go back to the admin and kind of review the the spending of the funds anyways.
Admin does get a monthly review of the budget, but we don't know anything about it. So you're right.
I mean, so I, I, I know that and I don't know, but I know nobody ever shows up, but sometimes they do. And that one of the guys, what, a resident in town got his, uh, street paved because he looked at our budgets a bunch and complained enough and now his street got paved. Like I, I think, I think you're right. There is some, there's like, yeah, you have these meetings and you go over the budget. And maybe you do the same thing. I, I just, I don't think we can throw that away because there is, these are all opportunities for the public to plug in. And even if they don't, if we don't have them, that's, then it's a problem. Even if people don't go, they're like, oh, you just eliminated all these public meetings. You are being less transparent. Even if people don't go, I think this is important.
Okay, so if, if some things are considered less transparent, that doesn't necessarily mean, I'm not going to go to the bathroom with the door open because you want to see what happens. But the point is there is such thing is, is, is unnecessary levels of transparency. We do go over the budget in the council meeting, do we not?
So admin is kind of boring. We've still had people show up. Didn't we have some random person show up about the parking?
Several random someone showed up, a bunch of business owners.
Will show up.
No, a couple of restaurants, a bunch of the restaurant owners.
Or just to see these opportunities as bonuses, like we're elected officials and it's hard to go out and talk to people. And when people show up at our meetings, that is a, that is a gift to us. Like, look, you didn't have to go and ask somebody in town, go, go, go door to door. We came to you and said, it's this thing. So when we have these people come in, we should be thanking them for making those time. Like, and I, and I just think we gotta, we gotta be careful.
I think when we get to the eight that we know, I think, well, after November, we'll kind of know who the eight are that's going to be here. Maybe there can be some times we meet. I know, gee, it's hard for you with school, but if we have a three o'clock meeting sometimes, that might get all of our you know, other supervisors here that want to come to Public Works, but doesn't, they don't really want to come back at seven o'clock.
It talked about briefly. That one could be earlier in the day, for example.
Let, let, I'm sorry, let me, let's finish the, what we talked about earlier and with the staff too, is if all possible with whatever eights here, if we can hold a three o'clock meeting, that would help, um, White Township does it. They hold one of their, um, public meetings in the afternoon that. And I know that's asking a lot with. You know, with people with kids and that, but maybe they're still in daycare.
If you can take time off of work, plus three o'clock, even if it goes three hours, it only goes till six. No, but I'm just saying, we've been here till ten o'clock at night before, remembers, Sarah, in the old days?
Well, Nicole, I had mentioned to you briefly, if it was at one, not that we have to land on an exact time at this moment, but if it was at one, it would allow anyone who had to get kids to get the kids. For example, if they get them off the bus. And obviously that makes it harder for teachers. So there isn't a, there isn't a perfect here.
Many gritty should be like voted on, but the eight incoming ones too.
But their committees have to be set. Right? We're going to advertise the committee schedule, don't we?
I mean, that, that we can do that in December, but I think we'll have a better idea.
And the new, the new council coming in, they could scrap it anyway.
Right.
If they chose to, I mean.
National meeting, the first Tuesday in January.
It's that Monday.
First Monday, January.
I know we had been talking about the ad hoc committees, but from what I read in that proposal or whatever you want to call it, that all the normal committee meetings we currently have would just be fall into being part of this like work session and some of the other meetings. So a lot of the bulk of our business. But I could even see meeting three times a week because, I, I mean, not a week, but a month, because we pretty much already do that with two work, work session, a regular council meeting and, and a, and a committee meeting. The eliminate, I, I think for staff, that's where what eliminates that I like is Nicole doesn't have to go to all these different committee meetings. It eliminates at least three evenings.
But I mean, I, I get what I signed up for, but I think though too, a lot of the other staffs, it's, we try to have a monthly committee meeting or monthly staff meeting and we try to say what, what happened at each buddy's committee meetings and we try to get that done in two hours just with, you know, our public works director and stuff like that. So if we all could, you know, try to make it to the same meeting and we're not constantly repeating ourselves.
This committee reports.
If everyone was there, yeah.
There anyway, so.
Well, we need to have a written report from each committee. Well, we need to have a written report from each committee.
But you you could have a consent, with a consent agenda. Yeah, consent agenda, right, Peter? Where you basically, it's it's there and you just blanket approve what's there. It's almost like approving minutes, kind of like to put it into the record.
Be. If there was an, if there was an as needed meeting that didn't happen compared to doing during a work session. Or you're saying if you have a meeting and you're gonna call it the committee meeting, you need to have a more official, ah, okay, okay, I, I got you, I got you. If it didn't happen at all, then obviously it didn't happen. Gotcha, okay.
To retain our current committee structure?
I hate it.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out why, what, why are we?
Well, because we won't have enough committee members to have more than two. More than two committee members unless each person serves on two committees.
I think I might have done a little, I think I might have worked it out there. Well, the president would have to be on all the committees.
But he would be one of the eight though, so. So on the vote, then somebody else would have to sub in for his third.
Two committees as well. Like we, we, so if you had two counselors and the president being the three people on each of our currently standing committees, two counselors and the president. Ever, all the counselors, the all eight would only serve on one, the president would be on all of them, go to all the meetings. We'd be short one and we may have the vice president have to serve on two committees.
He may not be the.
I know, I may not be president and the new.
But by law.
Might have a.
President is on the standing committee.
Is a member.
And they'll have to go. Because it'll just be three, but but even if, even if the president doesn't go and there's only two people there at the committee meeting.
Previous president.
We don't have to have votes that.
His presidents didn't always.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the, all those votes come to. I'm just saying, it's, I think it's, it is possible to move into our current committee structure. I haven't quite, I don't quite understand. What the benefit of? Why, why we're doing it, except that we have fewer people.
Had with a similar community?
Yeah.
You and Casey had seen the positives.
Time spent, then we'll have more access to information. And the fact. The community. Well, know more of what's happening, we'll be able to make a more educated decision.
I bring up something with public safety. Luke has questions about it. If we were all a part of that process all along, there, those questions wouldn't be come up. As often when, cause we'd be discussing it as it was being dealt with.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people.
Experiences. And as different things come up, like public works, I know a lot about the different things that public works do.
Public work.
Same time as uh, community development, for example, I would.
So I guess, I guess that why, I don't quite understand. I I've been, and and you said this to me last time when we were talking that. Uh, I probably am suffering from the like, you know, I've only seen it this way for a long time, so it's hard for me to get out of that. And that, that's totally, that's totally valid. Um, I don't though see a need to reduce the amount of work for counselors. Um, I, I've been, I just, I've I've been gen. Kindly satisfied with the process with, I've been just satisfied with the process with that. I know, but over the, you know, that that doesn't seem to be a problem that I I trust the uh. That's not decided and I also, I also tend to trust counselors, even when I didn't really, I I I trust the report, I guess, I trust the report. But I also uh, would make time to go to extra meetings, not a lot, but I, you know.
And I have done.
All y'all know, I've blown up your meetings before when I show up, so like, you know, I I take, I do try to take that time when there is something in particular that I wanna. Get into the nitty gritty. But so I, so I, I don't know. Yeah, I, so my, my, my point is I, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards, I'm not sure why we're getting out of the current committee structure, because I don't necessarily see counselors are burdened.
About it or understand it, so.
That's what we're doing.
I shouldn't. Um, I, I, again, my priority, you know, it's easier maybe on counselors to figure out, it's harder for the public to know what's going on, right? Because there's fewer opportunities to.
Thing would be easier to.
It is, maybe it is, maybe it is. I worry about this.
Opportunities, but it'd be more planable opportunities. It's the first, second and third Tuesday of every month. If you wanna come talk to council in a council session. Come the first, second or third Tuesday of every month, except for the first Monday of the year. Every other year.
And I'm, I'm not.
You're not going to be arguing that I am up, but I haven't made any decisions, but I.
The fourth Tuesday.
But I, I think a lot about public input. I showed up at the table because I was into public input. Um, and if you are the public and you want to have some kind of input, you have to disrupt. Right? You've got to be somehow, you you can't just put input, you've got to somehow be a disruptor in some way.
Just show up.
And it's harder to do that in a meeting where it's all happening quickly and you're just getting the information. If you want to.
Anyway.
Do you want to like? If you wanna interact, if you wanna actually get on agenda, you gotta come to our committee meetings. That's how you sort of disrupt the, that's our process until we miss that. I I'm, if I'm not on council, so I'm, I, y'all, y'all didn't know, but before I was on council, I came to a lot of council meetings, um, and I. I'm a disruptor and it would be harder to do.
Meeting still available, number one, number two or number three Tuesday, and if you really wanna um, see. The council people again, then come see them on the fourth Tuesday.
I also think this is being all redone, we could also rehash how we do public speak. Uh, because if we might be doing a portion of the uh, third Tuesday might be public works and there are people that have an interest in a certain project going on. Um, we might be able to open it up for some questions and answers and.
To have more of that open dialogue, yeah.
Uh, I mean, we don't have to be wedded to three minutes at the beginning and that's it.
The Q and A in the beginning and the end?
Cause I do like the fact that with the committee meetings, usually it, I know with mine, if you have discussions, we just have a discussion, have the people sit up with you and. Talk about it.
Yeah.
Up to the new um.
I think we have to have a sort of a framework though. But.
I think that'd be unfair to have potentially new people coming in with a totally new structure. And 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 being pr- being totally pragmatic, there are folks in here running for election with a lot of experience, if they do not. Win their elections, we're gonna lose a large amount of experience. And kind of sandbag some folks.
Running that isn't on council right now. I know there's someone going up against Peter. Okay. And that would be potentially two people out of a.
We're shrinking down. We're losing four people by default.
Right.
Right? So four, four people with some level of experience will be gone, no matter what. Even if whoever wants it wins reelection, right? For example, I do not believe Sarah's running again. She has many years of experience. Right? Ben has many years of experience. These folks will no longer be sitting in this room to to give input if we just kick it down the road. And Ben's brought up many good points today alone, if he's not here.
I'm saying.
The road.
Saying use the framework as it exists, and if there's any tweaking, let the new board, the new members do it in January.
The, the new council. Will be free to make any changes they they want to. But they wouldn't necessarily.
They have the same level of experience to formulate. An educated, new look.
You know.
Set anything up and then come in on, on Monday, January or Tuesday, January second and change it.
Right, yes.
Yeah, I mean, so, so I don't know if you mentioned.
Say this, Don, but you gave me an interesting idea and maybe someone already said this and it just registered. Cause you had said, well, if public works was on the third meeting. So is there, and then someone else had mentioned not having specific committee meetings and just have, if you have three meetings where you just spread out. The committee structure amongst the three meetings and in any given meeting, you may have some of the format of a committee. Now, maybe the first one has to be a dedicated, just like we did, but let's just use the second Tuesday and the third Tuesday as an example. If the committee structure was spread into those two separate meetings, you don't have to talk about public works and what we're gonna do for a bid twice. Right? You're talking about it, then you can then vote on it, right? So, so it would, I'm just curious if that, sorry.
We wouldn't be able to. Or any vote at one of these other meetings would be had recommendation. Unless all members. Were at them.
Made all three of them full meetings. Then, then you could, for example, open a bid and decide whether or not, you know, again, maybe, that's, maybe that's a bad example, cause you need to vet it, but like, just as an example, though. And I don't know if that's what Don meant, but I I I thought that was an interesting idea.
This for my two cents, I don't have a say. But where it could work that I would see would be your public safety stuff. You know, somebody comes in, they present, hey, we wanna use R M C Park for A, B and C. At your committee meeting, you would then say yes or no. And then that would come to council, right?
Right.
Okay. Here, you're gonna have all of council hearing that information.
You've already benefited.
Because you do that before your public safety meeting, correct?
Yeah.
So then instead of having the, the committee. Everybody's there, we can put it to a vote right then and approve it, and that might be more ex- more expeditious.
Yeah, it's a great example, and if you just, if you just take the basic committee structures and spread it over those two meetings, however. And obviously, this all needs to be finalized, right? This is just us kicking it around and trying to come up with ideas. But it would allow all the information to be disseminated to every council member. There were, are, and I'm sure there's other examples of it being of more expeditiously. Yeah, and I'm sure there's others, right? And again, it's still three opportunities where at any given moment, very planably, that if the public wants to come, they can.
Planable.
Is that a word?
If, if we cleaned up all the uh.
Grammar.
Perky language here, we're in. Be here all night. I'm curious. Did, when Casey came up with this, did she look at how some other smaller councils are organized? I think she did, didn't she?
We had a lot. It was the same.
That we're invited inventing the wheel here.
This is like existing boroughs that are similar to ours, like similar size or college town and. Do you wanna know which fourteen were on there? They had, Peter. Was seven. So Luke, so you're. Only had, they had seven, they had an odd number.
Too late. I, I have, I really like uh, Luke's uh, suggestion of, so these three meetings, we've got an all meeting, that's a voting session. And then the other two are essentially committee meetings and we cover. Public works and public safety, one of them, and we cover community development and admin, the other one, or some, some sort of categories like that.
One of the ad hoc type stuff is we need.
Verbage making you the voting meeting versus a non-voting meeting, or is it just the term for the first meeting?
Yeah, it's like we would.
What you could do, what you could do is you could have.
Luke, it's like a workshop.
Oh, you can have a voting meeting. Eh, where anything that needs to get voted on, you handle your business. Then you could say, all right, on this meeting. We will have a special focus on public works and community development. Cause those kind of run together. The next meeting, you would have your voting meeting and you would have your other committees. And that, you know, those are the main focuses. I don't know if that helps you, but I think that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah, honestly, and and if we didn't specifically voted them. It would also allow for more research. Done, things like that, so. Right, right. Well, yeah, sure.
The work session did, we did not vote at the work session.
Right.
If there was an item that needed to be voted on urgently and couldn't wait until the next council meeting. Then we would have to advertise that we were gonna be voting and. Do a special thing to, to do it. So we decided, we kept doing that all the time. To just establish from the beginning of the year that the work session was a voting meeting.
Isn't that the point of the work session?
Right.
Peter, like that's the point of the work session, you're essentially not really voting. It's just a work session. We only do it when we have to, like, if there's something, like, remember when Nicole did that? Proposal.
As we just did.
That is true. We just literally did it earlier.
Are we voting on this or?
I can't imagine we're voting on this yet.
Of course, so we can't vote on anything.
Like, there's like these three options. There's a sort of, the overall that Casey has put together, there's maybe an option of of just going four committees. And then there's the, there's the Luke uh, option there.
She was asking people, what's your monthly voting? What's your monthly meeting schedule like? How many committees do you have? Who serves on these committees? How often do these committees meet? How many um? Council members do you have?
Right.
Know where she was going with this? This is where she was going, because she asked all these people, these questions, and that's how she compiled. Um, that's how we compiled.
Yes, I totally.
Luke, remember?
I was just trying to uh, 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 try to summarize, there seems to be at least three options discussed. And we should probably get some teeth on them and write it down and have them to look at next time.
Yeah.
Best of my ability, so people can read it in actual words and then. Edit and add as, as they see fit. I mean, Casey already has it written down. At the end of the day, if we have two or three basic ideas, then we can pick which one we like the best. I mean, and then at that point. As it's spaded, the next council can change whatever they want anyway.
So just bring it to the next session.
Or even the next meeting and.
This at this point.
Do my thing now?
New business that whom wanted to bring before us.
Do you want to do the new business in the executive session or do you want me to talk about it here?
And so I don't know what the new business is. I just heard the tail end of what you said. So I'm not exactly sure what the motion for the new business was, so I don't wanna assume.
Did I say?
About a lawyer.
The board of council.
To consider paying for the civil suit against Bob Kogan for harassment of me. Close session or do you wanna do it?
That's a legal matter, you probably should do that in executive.
Which case Josh and Pat, you're not excused.
Is she the call for?
Is she the president of council?
And not that I know of. I, 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 I don't know whether parliamentary procedure allows any member to call for an executive session or not. Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's a legal, it's a legal issue that you're being asked to consider. You could go into executive session to discuss that.
I don't care.
We are, oh, yes, we do have to have.
That's for personnel.
Yeah, that's for personnel. We could say it's for personnel and legal.
Technically personnel.
Well, we're, the point is, it's not even her calling for one, we're already going into one. That's all I'm saying.
Is there anything else? And I'll let you know what time we, and with it, we get out of here.